So the council meeting will begin. City Clerk, take attendance please.
All councilors are present.
Okay, well now stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no special orders or announcements today, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. First is a public hearing with the resolution authorizing the city manager to implement Phase One of the Transit Development Plan, the TDP. Ms. Gavin.
We are here tonight to present, as was mentioned, Transit Development Plan and ask council to authorize the resolution that instructs the city manager to implement Phase One of this Transit Development Plan. Brief amount of background, this Transit Development Plan actually dates back to about 2014 is when we began work. We had a national consulting firm known as Nelson Nygaard assist us with this project because it is a very large, comprehensive project. Root need for doing so is because the city of Beloit is recipient of federal Transit Administration funding in order to ensure that the transit system is open and responsive to the public needs and wishes. We are required to go through a comprehensive overview and study. It's typically done about every five years. There can be reasons why you do it more or less frequently. And what triggered this was a number of things, including our awareness that because the 2010 census data had come out for public circulation in about 2013, we wanted to make certain that what we were doing in providing transit service was reflective of the current needs of the community, the demographics, and the individuals that are more likely to need and benefit from public transit. So there are not that many firms in the grand scheme of things that have that kind of expertise. And we were blessed to get the funding and the support from, not through city of Beloit per se, but through our metropolitan planning organization. The end result was a presentation, a number of different presentations. We had some public meetings that took place in November of last year. We had open houses, public open houses that took place May 25th, a few weeks ago. And prior to tonight, council had already approved a prior resolution, which in November of 2015, which accepted this plan. Specifically, we were very careful to carve out and not ask council at that time to take action, just to accept the plan and allow the public and council time to really comprehend what was being proposed. So in the plan, it calls for multiple phases. I want to make it abundantly clear that at this point, we are simply focusing on the first phase. Future phases may or may not be implemented at some future date and will be completely dependent on available state and federal funding. So for tonight, we're going to be focusing exclusively on Phase One. Along with that, I brought forward a recommendation for a few minor modifications to even the map that was presented in November to council. The biggest changes in this phase are going to be primarily where the routes operate and to some extent, the time of day. We're proposing extending the service, instead of finishing at 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, it will finish at 6:40, and I'm going to come back to that in a bit. So right now, we have 40-minute service, and that will remain. We did look at and ask the consultants to see if there was a way that we could increase the headway from 40-minute intervals to 30. However, with the geography and distances involved in the city, that was not going to be pragmatic. We did eliminate the tripper routes. When the school district made the decision to provide yellow school buses for middle school kids, we anticipated that it was going to significantly reduce the need for public transit, and that proved to be the case. We allowed the buses to run for a long time until we were confident that we had transitioned 100% of the kids onto the regular routes. And then we successfully got to that point in November. I'm going to, in the interest of time, because I want to make certain that I allow, in case there's any comments or questions, that I'm going to go through some of these slides. This is exactly the same presentation, almost identical, to what was presented to council in November. So when the consultants were here, of course, behind the scenes, they did a lot of different studies, including comprehensive what are called on/off counts. They actually rode every single route, every single day, every time of day, for a very long time, and were counting the number of individuals that got on and off. The circles on that map represent the clusters, you know, down at the transfer site, across the parking lot from here, of course, we have the biggest number of people getting on or off. And the larger the circles, the greater the number of individuals. I'll draw your attention along, for example, the green route on the east side that goes along Milwaukee Road. You'll notice there's almost no dots along that corridor. In another map, I'm going to come back to that, but please remember that for a minute. I think that's going to be important. Another area is, you can't see the street names, but for those of you that are familiar, if you look at the intersection of House and McKinley, and you look along House and McKinley, for example, you're going to see no dots. Again, we're going to come back to that area in a minute. I'm going to skip some of these because they're going to distract us, I think frankly, from what we really need to get at today. Okay, there's our current system, again with the same circles and dots. Once again, please take a look at that length of Milwaukee Road, and you'll notice there's really almost no dots along there, and very few along that segment of House and McKinley. I've had a few people that have expressed concerns with the proposed routes, which we're going to look at momentarily, but I want you to notice the very minimal number of individuals that are using the buses along those corridors. This is the exact map that was presented to council in November. And after this, I'm going to show you the map that we're going to recommend implementing. First, I want to draw your attention to the area in front of Woodman's. One of the proposals that we have on the table is very minimal, but it would reinstate service in front of Woodman's. It's not going to add any real amount of time, but on this map, again, you'll notice House and McKinley, there's a gray line that shows where the existing route is. And in the new route, depicted in blue, you'll notice it doesn't go there. If you remember from the previous map, we had negligible number of boardings along that corridor. Similarly, you'll notice along Milwaukee Road, we have, the consultants have recommended changing the route, and I'm going to explain what those changes mean, but I want to draw your attention to the notion that there is no service along that corridor. Essentially, what I'm getting at is there was no one using the bus along that corridor. So with public transit, we have to be mindful of providing the greatest amount of service to the individuals that are most likely going to use the service. And those individuals have been identified as predominantly living in areas like the near west side, sort of in the area of Bluff Street, Fourth Street in front of the high school, the near east side, the Merrill neighborhood, for example, Walmart being a major destination, Woodman's, and the north end going up to Chalko Hospital and the clinic, and up to Colony Court. And this system, I want to share with you, those red and yellow routes that are being proposed, go in both directions. The important thing is to understand, if you can envision that you live on Bluff Street and you need to go to Walmart, you can see on the map that that's going to be a very direct journey, and then going back is going to take you back essentially in exactly the same journey. Really, actually about the same route that you would do if you were driving your car. And you can understand that your travel time when you're coming back with ice cream is going to be very short, okay? So what that will do, it is believed and recommended that that is going to eventually positively impact ridership. If you can get on the bus and get to where you're going quickly, travel time has been considered to be one of the most important barriers to economic independence. And this plan, I believe, is going to address that for the greatest number of individuals. And, again, this is going back to their, this is sort of just an inset, so I'm going to bypass this for a little bit because I don't think it comes through very clearly. But I'm going to go onto this map. This is one that we developed at Transit in-house. And I'm going to walk you through the few little miniscule changes. It's not much, but I think they're important changes. And we are putting these changes in based on input and feedback that we have had from our clients since the consultants left town. So in front of Woodman's, on the extreme west side, there's a little, almost looks like we're going in around a cul-de-sac. The proposal is that we maintain service on that frontage road. There's a stop right there, no one crosses the street, turn around in the parking lot like we do now at Family Dollar, and then resume back the route. We're not even missing any existing stops that are being proposed. Also on that blue route on the west side, on the very south end of it, we are proposing deviating a little bit off of West Grand, down a couple of blocks, a few blocks, down to Highland Avenue, and then back up onto McKinley. That small additional projection will cut that walking distance for some of the clients that have demonstrated a need. Next, we are proposing maintaining the service on the same side of the street directly in front of Aldi's, on the extreme east side, that red route. We don't want people crossing Cranston Road. We're also preserving the routing that goes through the Settler Avenue, Farmer's Staples shopping area. That's a pretty important area, even with that retail facility shut. We still have people using the other retail facilities there. And it also reinstates service directly in front of the Cancer Center, which has been a very important destination for us. It also reinstates service along that Milwaukee frontage road. I guess we have a number of clients that work out at the hotels, and we think that that's important, not in terms of distance, but there isn't really good passenger amenities out there, pedestrian amenities. And then last, I'll draw your attention to the area of Prairie and Copeland. The consultants had recommended that we go in both directions on Henry with both those routes. My staff came up with the idea that we instead reinstate the service that we currently have along Chalko here to Copeland on route to the library. And what that allows people to do is, those that live along Copeland, that's probably me and my phone. There's always that one person at every meeting. That was great, good timing. And so, but for anybody that needs to go along Henry Avenue that can't, won't, chooses not to walk that short distance from Copeland back up to Henry, when they get to the Eclipse Center, there's an outgoing bus. So for the sake of two or three minutes, they can get a bus, or if they prefer to walk and, you know, whatever. It provides greater service into and adjacent to the Merrill neighborhood, which, like I've mentioned, happens to be a pretty significant area for us because we have a lot of our clients that live in that neighborhood, and that's important to us. So there's a lot of other proposals. The other thing I want to mention to you very briefly, we are, in fact, this talks about implementing Google Transit. We're actually out live, I haven't advertised that, marketed it because we're actually redesigning our website, Google Transit, new maps, new riders' guides, and we're trying to get the biggest bang for our buck. We've only got, you know, 19 cents to market all of this, so we've got to put it all together and try and leverage a major story so that hopefully we can carry that out in the newspapers and get the biggest attention that we can. But it's out there, and we're also developing a how-to guide so that people understand how to use that, and I'm hoping to do some in-services. So there's a few other pieces that we're still working on at Transit. Another thing that I'm going to draw to your attention is that over the course of the summer, we are installing, we've already had them made, new bus stop signs that are very large, very bold, and ADA compliant. They're very high contrast. So they're going to almost seem garish according to the streetscape. That's good, okay? Orange, blue. But the idea is that from a distance, our passengers can see them. And the other significant difference is that they are identified on both sides. Because bus stops often, it's like, well, that's great if you're in a car going the same way that, but our passengers are walking from the other side. So I think you'll be pleased to see those. And those bus stops are all being located in GIS, and that is part of this Google Transit. So you'll be able to, using a smartphone, dial in two addresses, and it will tell you how to get there by bus, including the walking parts, and the time, and the cost, and so forth. So I guess I should invite and see if there's any commentary from anybody here, maybe start with council.
We're going to open up for discussion or for comments from the public first.
Okay.
When you're through.
I guess that's it, unless anybody has any immediate questions or comments from council?
Until after the call.
After the call.
Okay. All right. So that's it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll now open up for public comments on what Ms. Gavin just presented. Just come on down to the podium, introduce yourself, your address, please.
Hi, I'm Prisha Gustina, 1313 11th Street. My question was, she mentioned that she was going to deviate on Bluff Street, and she wasn't specific about that. And I know right now that the bus line goes down, or deviate off West Grand, I believe. And I know right now that the bus line goes all the way down West Grand. And I'm just curious as to how it would be, you know, how it would deviate from West Grand and onto Highland, because there's a lot of apartment buildings in the 200, the 300 block, 900 block down West Grand, so that's my question.
Do you want to respond to that now, or at the end? Well, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. To answer that, it's pretty straightforward. The bus is going to maintain service at that 200 and 300 block of West Grand. That part's not changing. It's a little bit further west of that. We were proposing having it go along Hackett to Highland and then back up McKinley onto West Grand. So that small deviation is actually going to take place in between two existing stops, so no one's losing service on anywhere along West Grand, if that makes sense.
So it's going to go to Hackett?
Correct.
And then take a left?
On Hackett, yes, down to Highland and then back up. So that's drawn in the map. If you want, when we're done, I can show you the map in person if it's a little easier to see.
You got the list? Thank you.
Yeah, so what it amounts to is we're, like I said, we're not leaving any, all of the stops along West Grand are going to remain. We're simply deviating in between two of the stops, if that makes sense.
Well, I would suggest maybe, Prisha, maybe you could give a call to Michelle and discuss it further, possibly, or even tonight after. Okay, thank you, Michelle. Other public comments on the proposed transit changes?
Michelle, please, I need to help. I'm so afraid, so scared.
Okay, could you please, ma'am?
Excuse me, please.
Could you please introduce your name, please, and your address?
Valentina, Valentina, I live on the 1226 McKinley. It's too hard for me to walk to bus stop three houses. How is now, I wish not change nothing. Yes, please, because you know, I can't walk far at all, and I need surgery. You know, it will be a worse situation to move for me, but I use bus every day.
What I would suggest, ma'am, is after the final person speaks, maybe, Michelle, if you have a minute, to meet with the individuals up in the conference room, possibly? Is that possible? Michelle, if you have time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I only want to know if changed or still same same.
Yeah, she'll meet with you in just...
Because I don't understand nothing, you know?
Okay. She'll meet with you privately in a few minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Second call, other comments on the transit? Final call. Thank you, Michelle, thank you, and thank you for meeting with these individuals. So whenever you want to go up in the room?
I have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Michelle, we have some questions from the council. Go ahead.
I want other people I want to hear first.
Me, but you go ahead. Okay.
You're good, okay.
You're on.
First of all, Michelle, thank you to you and your staff. I know that you've gone above and beyond to get input from the riders, so thank you so much for that. I attended several of those public information meetings, and you've been very responsive. And I love that some of the tweaking that you've done has been directly because you've heard from passengers about little tweaks that could be made that would really make their lives easier for travel. I did want to ask you, because I am still concerned about that hole in the west side that we talked about earlier today. It sounds like, though, that you will be able to in the future, if that quarry comes forward, that you'll be able to make some small adjustments again in terms of dipping down and picking someone up or a couple people up in certain blocks that, you know, regularly use the bus. Is that true?
That is true. So once the route is fundamentally in place, and we have a pretty good idea of how much available time that it has, and that particular route, the way it's been designed is it has a little bit of additional time. Now, some of that, a small amount of additional time that we have, we're going to be using by going to Woodman's, like I mentioned, and going down to Highland, okay? So I can't commit to how many additional minutes we may still have.
Right.
That said, you know, transit planning is almost equal parts art and science. And so what we're presenting right now is the culmination in a lot of discussions, studies, and so forth. I will tell you right now, there's always that possibility that circumstances change, you know, new business goes in. Transit planning has to be adaptable to circumstances and populations and demographics that move. So the west side, we're going to be very mindful and continue to try and make certain that we reach out to not just that area, but anywhere, you know? And if there's any way that we can safely change the route to accommodate individuals without equally disenfranchising a population that's become dependent on or over here, that's the other thing we have to be mindful of.
Right, it's balancing.
But in general terms, yeah, and not just in that area, I just want to make it a little bit more of a global statement. It could be anywhere in the city. For example, I've had some inquiries recently from Staples, the distribution center. I haven't met with them yet, you know? We have to have a look at that route. We're trying to get through this. I'm not even positive exactly what their needs are. It's for employment. But just to illustrate that there can be those other circumstances that you have to try and adapt to as much as possible. So if I can give you the assurance that we're always going to be receptive to modifying it, the other consideration is where that route needs to go. Are there adequate, there may not be sidewalks, but is it at least a safe travel route? You know, in other words, are there a lot of cars parked on the street there and other details like that? And we want to make certain that we don't encourage people to get themselves injured, you know?
Thank you. I have another question. Would it be possible to have a staff member housed at the Transit Center for a couple days during this transition in the route so that, because we know a lot of people get on and off at the Transit Center, just so they can be there and say, hey, the big sign, if you have any questions about the route changes, that I'm here to answer those?
Yeah, and not only that, the other thing that we had talked about doing is at least for the first day or so, having extra staff on hand in case clients, you know, miss the bus, and we don't want to let anybody be stranded. So we anticipate that transition time is going to be very difficult for some individuals, no matter what we do, to try and do outreach ahead of time. So one of the things that I have not put in front of council is an actual start date. Part of that is because we're hastily working behind the scenes to get the maps generated, and I won't commit to a date until I know that we're ready to go and that we've done all that outreach.
Okay.
I want my staff to be fully trained, not just so they know where to drive the bus, but that they're ambassadors and know how to answer those questions.
Great.
And so, yeah, we will be staffing up, not just at the transfer site, but, you know, at the building and with vehicles in case we need to go and help people.
Great, thank you. And then my last question, are we getting any traction from Beloit College with the student passes that we've been wanting to pursue?
Periodically, and not really.
Okay.
Beloit College, because it's an urban downtown campus and it's fairly self-contained, our service traditionally ending at 6:00, was never very appealing to the college crowd. I don't know that this new change is going to make that much of a difference, but I didn't highlight or illustrate that we were in fact going to be operating until 6:40.
Right.
That's a pretty critical development. If people are commuting back from Janesville, for example, for employment in school, it will allow them to get on that last bus arriving in Beloit at 6:00 and still make transfers to get home. They won't be stranded downtown like they currently are. I don't know that that's going to be enough to incentivize the college from participating because, you know, the kids probably want to go out at night. But again, we're receptive. I think what we have to do is make certain we have enough to offer.
Great, thank you so much.
Other council questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, okay, just a second, Regina. Duncan, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, Michelle, that you all did a really good job with involving the community in the transportation meetings, and I did get to attend some of those, and you were welcoming all the input, so that was much appreciated. And then I also wanted to thank you for keeping the Aldi, the Stop at Aldi, and the one at the Cancer Center, and then also the partnership with the, taking the children from the Boys and Girls Club to the Y, and hopefully other organizations will be included in that in the future. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Mark, just a second, I'll get you here. Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Thanks, Michelle. I know this is a hard work. This is a hard thing to come up with, and I like the fact that you're taking into account your ridership and trying to appeal to the customer base that you've got out there and the usage patterns that you've established that took a lot of data collection. And that's good, it's all data-based. And I like the fact you've got built-in allowances for fudging this over and making allowances. I can, I still don't like the big hole on the west side, and I hate to say it, but I don't like the fact there's no City of Beloit logo on the signs.
Yeah.
Unless you've managed to fix that. Last sign I saw didn't show anything about the City of Beloit on, so I was disappointed.
On the new bus stop signs?
Yeah.
Okay, you'll see...
Mockup I saw didn't have it, so.
Yeah, okay.
And that's my only comment, but otherwise, you guys did a stellar job, and it's a lot easier to do this with a computer, isn't it?
Very much so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Thank you, and thank you for meeting with these individuals and continuing to modify.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we've got the resolution.
Is there a motion? Motion's been made by Forrest, second, and by Slonaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Next part of the agenda is citizens' participation. At this time, citizens will come forward and speak. I like to ask people to speak, limit to three minutes, the speaking, refrain from any attacks on officials or any individuals, and council will not comment on anything tonight at this time. With that, I have two slips of paper of people that have come forward wanting to speak, and there may be others, but first, we have two public officials here. First, from Janesville, Sam Liebert. Sam?
Sam Liebert, 331 North Terrace Street, Janesville, Wisconsin. First off, I just want to say, you guys have really nice council chambers. I'm really jealous of you guys. I came here tonight sort of wearing two hats. First off, to the city council president, fellow city council members, to the city clerk and city manager. Again, my name is Sam Liebert. I'm the council president of Janesville, just north of you guys. And I just wanted to come today to just say hi, to put a face to the name and to extend a continued olive branch of friendship between our two cities. I know historically, probably way before I was born, there's been some differences and perhaps some roughness around the edges between our two cities for whatever historic reasons, but I think those times are behind us. I think our communities share a lot more in common than we know. A lot of people who live in Janesville work in Beloit, and they live in Beloit and work in Janesville, and so I just wanted to extend that friendship to you, to the council of Beloit. I know I'd also like to work with the council president and your city manager as well to perhaps have another social event sometime this upcoming year to talk about ways that we can continue working together, perhaps sharing resources as tax levies remain frozen, as resources for Madison continue to tighten up and more mandates come down, unfunded mandates come down for Madison. We, as the two largest cities, I think, in the community, need to work together, and where maybe perhaps there's redundancies or things that we're both doing that we can both work together on, I'd like to see that these could be addressed and we could work together. So, again, on behalf of myself and my council, I just want to say thank you and hello, and I also am here with a second hat this evening, just to take a few seconds. I'm also running to be your next county clerk, and if I'm lucky enough, again, I just want to introduce myself to you. I look forward to working with your city clerk, who was also a fine county clerk for several years, and to the other two dozen and a half municipal clerks in this county on moving forward and making this community that we live in a better place to live. And so, again, I thank you for your time, thank you for your service. I feel like I'm punishing myself sometimes of going to other city council meetings, you know, when I don't have to go to, and so, but no, in all seriousness, thank you for your time and your service, and if you ever have questions, I look forward to talking to you, and hopefully, we can get our councils together again and talk about how we can further our friendship and relationship and move our two respective communities forward.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. Next sheet, Dan Schuf.
Hi, thank you very much, welcome. Thank you for having me here. I'm Dan Schuf, 1955 Pebble Drive, Beloit, Wisconsin. I'm just here tonight to make brief comments on behalf of Beloit College in support of your rental inspection program. We are an anchor in, you know, the near east side neighborhood, and at last count, about a quarter of our faculty and staff lived within walking distance of the college, and we obviously have students as well that choose to spend, you know, their junior, senior year in rental units. I think, I know there's been some changes with Act 176 in Madison, and I understand how those things come from my, how those things work from my previous life, but I would just say from Beloit College's perspective, you know, we would really urge that you keep strong the rental inspection program. I think we would all, and maybe the community, would welcome a debate about the number of rental units and quality, but I know that all of us in the community want to make sure that the units that are rented to folks that are either coming in to work or to live, might have language barriers, might not, are living in safe communities and safe homes. So, we'd urge you, I know this will be a long process in different ways, but just would urge the council to continue to keep that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Other individuals who'd like to speak at this time? Second call for other individuals who'd like to speak. Third and final call. Okay, we'll close that part of the meeting, we'll go to the consent agenda. All items in the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's sole request, in which the event item will be removed from their general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. Would anybody like anything removed? Counselor DeForest?
Yes, item H, please.
Item H, anybody else? Okay, items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, K will be up. Is there a motion to?
And L.
Read the wrong one, I'm sorry. And L, sorry. Motion to pass those.
We approve of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Approved by Levy, seconded by Hendricks, by Duncan, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, item H is a resolution approving the addendum number one to Cadillac Drive condominium plat located at 2660 Cadillac Drive.
Ms. Christensen.
This project was originally approved in zone plan unit development in 2006. There's a PUD resolution in your packet which outlines the conditions under which that was approved. The conditions are that 48 dwelling units total, that they had to submit PUD final plans and architectural plans, that they had to pay an impact fee per dwelling, new dwelling unit constructed, that the property owner shall construct Cadillac Drive between Caroline and the south property line of lots three, including a public sidewalk along the west side of Cadillac Drive, and then there'd be a rude setback of 25 feet for building one only, and all the other buildings should be set back at least 30 feet from the property lines. Those would all, all those conditions all still remain in effect. After that, PUD was approved in '06. In '07, they did obtain approval of a condo plat for only 36 of the 48 units they were authorized for. They constructed the first six-unit condo building, and then basically discontinued construction during the recession, them and everyone else. We saw very little construction between there and 2012. They're proposing 42 additional units to go up to the 48 that were originally approved as part of the PUD for eight-unit buildings. One is a 10-unit building. They're all proposed to be two stories in height with an attached garage and a patio facing the internal pond, which has already been constructed. It will also include a mailroom building, a maintenance garage, visitor parking stalls. There's a rendering included in the packet, and we're currently through, going through the review process for the site plans themselves, and the assessors office did note that the unit addresses aren't going to work. Fire also noted that, fire inspector. So, the resolution before you tonight is approval of the condo plat, which would include a total of 48 units, with the conditions subject, being subject to the conditions that the city assessors office shall assign all unit numbers before the plat may be recorded, and that the applicant shall record the plat with Rock County and provide planning with a copy by the end of the year.
Counselor DeForest.
One quick question, then I have a comment. Ms. Christensen, since the PUD had been previously approved, this wasn't noticed to the neighboring residents, correct? And there was no signage placed letting them know about this? And my concern is that, this is a comment now, this was approved in 2006 and 2007 before any of us were on the council, including myself, and subsequently, we have heard very strongly from the neighbors that there's a lot of housing density in this area, which is why we had voted down the multi-unit complexes that were proposed in the past since I've been on city council. I don't know if my colleagues have had a chance to look at the drawings, the proposed, how they're planning to put these buildings in that space, and they are really packed in there. I am concerned about this density. I hope that my colleagues have had a chance to look at that. My other concern is that, aside from the density, looking at the architectural design that's been presented, they look like they are, from what I can see from a layperson's perspective, these are pretty low-end, low-quality condos, and I'm just concerned that if they can't sell as condos, will pressure be on future city council to amend and make them rentals? And they're going to have buildings already sitting there, and I'm worried that, it doesn't seem unforeseeable to me that a city council in the future could be approached and be told, hey, we can't sell these condos, so we need to revise and let them be rentals. So, I just wanted to make those comments. The neighbor spoke really loud and clear before about the housing density in this issue. They're not here now because I didn't even know this was an issue, so I just wanted to make that comment. I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Council president, I'll, first of all, in full disclosure, these will be rental to start. Condominium form of ownership is not what we're approving. You're approving a land use. You don't have authority over whether a property is owner-occupied or rental. They did say that, tell us at Plan Commission, that they would be rental to start. If the condo market turns, they will sell them as owner-occupied. In terms of the density, single-family residential density is five units per acre for R1A, up to 7.25 units per acre for R1B, so our two single-family zoning designations. This development is 5.3 units per acre, which is closer to a single-family density than a multifamily density. So, it was, it is well within, you know, your normal range for single-family development, but a condominium plat is just the way the property's owned. It's not about how it's occupied.
They're called condominium plats, but they're rent, they're renting.
Yeah, a condo isn't necessarily owned by owner-occupant. It is the way it, the property is, I don't know how to explain it. I don't know, Beth, you can explain it better than me.
I don't think you can explain this to me. It doesn't, it seems very misleading to me, but maybe, I'm just a layperson, so I don't know.
I mean, each individual unit will be owned separately, will have separate, a separate parcel number, but they will all be owned by DMW Development. But, the way they're laying it out, they're not laying it out on one parcel with a building. They're laying it out as each one being able to be sold individually. When somebody does a condo plat, that does not mean that it's owner-occupied. I think people believe that as a general rule of thumb.
Individually.
But, they're, they can be individually owned, the units, and then the common area is always maintained by the developer. And he did, I mean, one of my Plan Commissioners, two of my Plan Commissioners are here tonight, so the developer did, not the developer, but the contractor, the surveyor.
Okay, I was in that Plan Commission, so...
Did indicate, did indicate that, and we didn't include it because you're, it's a land use application, so you're not voting on whether it's owner or renter. You're voting on, like you were talking about, the density, whether this is inappropriate to have the units laid out this way. You're looking at it from a land use perspective as a council. You don't, like, for, just like for single-family neighborhood, you don't get to decide which are owner and which are renter. You don't, it doesn't come before you every time that changes. You're approving a land use, which their intention is to rent them in the short term, to build them to condo standards with the plan in the long run to sell them, because they do not want to own these long-term, and that they were going to rent, somebody asked the question, so they were going to rent for about $900 a month. And I didn't see the surveyor here. Oh, Tom is here, Tom Wood is here, so I didn't realize you were here.
I hear you're, I hear you're saying that our authority lies in a designating land use, not owner versus renter, but, and I also heard you say that, given the particular land use for this parcel, you're not concerned about the density. But, when I look at the density, literally across the way, all the multi-unit housing, literally right on the other side, I mean, there's how many buildings there? I don't remember how many units there are there. A lot of units, and I'm just concerned that we're concentrating, again, and that that's been a concern everywhere in the city, that we don't concentrate all these multi-unit buildings near each other. It ends up being a problem down the road, so I'm trying to be futuristic. And honestly, and I'm just sharing my opinion, and I don't mean any offense, but these look like low-end, low-quality in terms of prospective buyers. When I'm looking at these pictures, I, maybe it's just me, but I, I'm going to stand by not voting for this. Thank you.
Excuse me, Dave.
Ms. Duncan, just one second here, please. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Julie a question, because I know, Sheila, you were saying they were low-end, but I went, Julie and I did a tour of that area, and I don't believe those were low-end. They didn't look low-end to me.
The building that is, I mean, I didn't look at the architectural samples and everything that came in. Drew has been doing the review. There's a staff review of the architecture and the materials. Yeah, those are in the packet, but in terms of, that doesn't give you a full picture of what materials are being used. But, the building that's out there now is a different style than what the rest of the buildings are proposed to be. And I don't know.
Like, they're pretty...
Can you speak to the...
Of course, it's sideways.
Okay. Someone out there.
Okay. Other comments, questions? I'll make one if I can. I've had, I've been out there quite a bit, and I've surveyed. The ones that are there right now, I'm pretty impressed with. I've been in them, I've got a relative in one, very impressive, and I, compared to other units that I've seen that aren't as favorable around town. The main access road to get to those apartments, I call them apartments because that's what they were when I was out there, when I'd been out there, would be by that restaurant, the family restaurant by the hospital, if you know the road for those in the audience.
West turn.
My big concern in the past, as I voiced at council meetings before, people, in order to get access back there, have gone through neighborhoods, so I'm waiting for the day when that road from Henderson, I think it's Henderson, can go through.
From Elmwood.
Elmwood can go through, but the apartments I've seen are in pretty good shape, they're well-maintained, the garages are nice. I would not call them low-end, the ones that I've seen, the ones that are constructed at this time.
These are different. These aren't those.
Okay. Is the developer the same?
Yes.
Same individual?
But, these in your package do not look like the ones that are out there.
If I could ask him, if I could ask him some questions?
I mean, he's not the developer, he's a surveyor, but he can speak for the developer.
Okay. Could you just introduce yourself, sir?
Yes, my name is Tom Wood. I'm with Harrison Associates representing DMW Development.
Tom, why, is there a discrepancy? We've been talking about that. Are these, how are these different from the ones that are currently there?
Well, they are a different structure. We've been before this council several times with different ideas. The condominium market is nowhere to be found, okay? So, basically, they need to take this piece of property and do something with it. They've tried to turn it into a rental situation with multifamily, classified as multifamily development, but that failed several times. So, we're before you now to present a different-style building, still the type of condominium feel, okay? It's going to be divided up separately with individual amenities like central air, things like that. But, as far as the, these will be rented. We make no bones about it. This is a rental market. The condominium market isn't there, so they will be owning them entirely as, in one ownership and rented out individually.
And the range, price range?
Right around that 900 range. There's really not going to be a difference, any range, because the units are identical across the board. They're all two levels, two stories, they're considered townhomes. Individual parking that will be basically attached to their unit. So, if you saw the details in the architectural renderings, we didn't do, design them, but I think they're part of the packet.
Go ahead, Ms. ... Go ahead, manager.
If you're able, I think the question was, can you describe the difference in the architectural design between the currently constructed condominiums and the proposed condominiums? The most substantial differences between those different buildings?
The most substantial difference, if you were to set them side by side, which they will be, the existing building out there is a six-unit building, single-story, ranch style. These are going to be two-story townhomes, and that's really the substantial difference between them.
So, a staff has the opportunity to review the architectural design of the buildings, you're able to go on record with agreeing to substantively the same architectural materials and makeup of the currently constructed buildings?
Correct.
Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Other questions from Mr. Wood? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Christensen? Thank you. Wait a minute, just a second. Sheila, do you have a question?
I'm wondering, I'm thinking about making a motion to lay this over and give the opportunity for the residents who have continually, every time that I, this issue has come forward in this neighborhood, have come to us with their concerns, and I want to make sure they're aware that this is what's being proposed, and they have the opportunity to come to us with their concerns. I understand we're not obligated to notice them, so maybe they weren't aware of it, but I'd like to give this more time to make sure that they can come forward to us. Some of you are newer on the council and might not know, but there's a really strong neighborhood opinion about multi-unit development in this area, so I will move that we lay this item over to our next meeting.
She'll second to that.
I'll second, so we can discuss.
Okay, seconded by Levy?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Is there a time constraint on these? Is there a timeframe that we need to move, or if we don't, are we going to start the process over? How far, where are we at if we decide to lay this over for, to the next meeting? I mean, is there time restraints or anything that we have to be concerned about?
Um, no.
But in terms of, if you lay it over one meeting, is it going to start over? No, it won't do that.
Questions, other comments?
President, did you want the developer to respond to that question?
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
It's been going on for nine years. All they're trying to do, yeah, they have time, but they've been sitting on this land for nine years. And my feeling is that they, they, they want to get this developed. They want to take that piece of property that has one building on it, it's supposed to have six, and get it done. Bring the tax revenue into the city, finish completing that project. We've done everything that staff has told us to do, and it's been nine years. I mean, they, they, quite frankly, economically, they want to just finish the project. Laying this over, I'm not sure what that's going to prove at this point. We had the original approval done nine years ago. We brought the residents in. We had a community meeting, neighborhood meeting. I know there's probably a lot of neighbors living there now that weren't there nine years ago, but we're at a point now where we just want to get it done. But laying it over just means I have to come back here. You know, and it's, I come from Green Bay, so it's three hours away, but, so I'd, quite frankly, like to see this get done.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to hold it over. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Say nay? Nay?
Nay.
I think that's, motion was not passed one to six. Am I correct? Anybody besides Sheila vote in favor? Six to one then, against. So the motion then is to approve the resolution approving the addendum number one to Cadillac Drive Condominium Plat located at 2660 Cadillac Drive. Plan Commission recommended for approval five to zero. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Levy, seconded by Hendricks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passed six to one. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances now.
Which is a proposed ordinance to amend section 7.06, sub 2C1, 7.65, 14.02, sub 9, 14.06, sub 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, and sub 25.04, sub 4D of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit pertaining to rental unit inspection program and rental registration certificates. This is first reading.
Ms. Christensen.
2015 Wisconsin Act 176 was enacted in March of this year. It includes various provisions which affect the city's rental dwelling permit program. Due to this act, several changes are recommended to be made to the municipal, municipal code to bring us in compliance with that law. The proposed ordinance renames the title of the document issued to property owners from annual rental dwelling permit to an annual rental registration certificate in various sections of the municipal ordinance before you. Section two provides a clearer explanation of the fees being charged for the rental inspection program. These are the current fees that are in place. There is no inspection fee for the first inspection, and then no charge if that violation is corrected the day of the inspection. So basically, the first inspection is free. Section four provides the rationale for the rental inspection program that the currently, city currently administers. Section five removes, removes the provision which allowed the cities to suspend the rental registration certificate for failure to allow rental inspection. Section six of the ordinance specifies the late fee amount will be established by city council resolution. Currently, there's some language in, in chapter 14 which specifies that a late fee of $5 or 20% of the license, whichever is greater, the fee resolution will be on the next agenda, but the plan is to charge the same late fee that's currently in place. And section 12 actually, actually outlines how we will transition from a rental dwelling permit to the rental registration certificate. We will be, if approved, we would issue new rental registration certificates to those who have already received them, and then we're giving the ones who have not applied 30 days to apply. This is on your agenda for first reading only, and then laid over under the rules.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Given a related pending lawsuit, I'm not at liberty to explain why I'm voting against this ordinance. I wish I could share the reasons why, but I'm not able to at this time. So, but I will be voting against this ordinance. Thank you.
Other comments, counselors? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
This is a motion to lay over to the next meeting, yes.
Okay.
I'm going to lay over the proposal.
Second. Motion by Levy, seconded by, uh, Pretzel. Do we, we have a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Motion to lay over.
Motion to lay over, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one, to lay over. Appointments, there are none, is that correct?
That is correct.
Counselor activities and upcoming events. Sheila, we'll start with you.
Sure, why not?
Turn on the microphone, Mr. President.
Give me another month.
Sorry. Thank you. First, I would like to thank all of the many incredible volunteers that made Vets' role possible. What a wonderful occasion that is to celebrate and honor our vets, and I'd like to thank each of the people who, like I said, helped make that possible. I was able to attend the Behavior Health Redesign Steering Committee, and appreciated the ongoing cultural competency training received through that committee, and the Coordinated Criminal Justice Council, I was able to attend that as well. Was able to attend a brave neighborhood watch group meeting, and I would like to thank those neighbors who are involved in, in working hard to be a part of the solution to make the city safer. I was also able to attend the Rock River Coalition Meeting, and our very own Bill Frisbee participated in the paddle and probe, where he kayaked down the Rock River in Wisconsin for several days and collected water samples so that we can ascertain the water quality of the Rock River, and I'm excited to report that the water, water quality is improving. And I think a lot of it has to do with the efforts we've made all along the Rock River to, to make a difference with what's being put in the water and how we're taking care of it. So I'm, I'm thrilled with that. I was able to attend the dedication of the computer lab at the Boys and Girls Club that the Caldwell family so graciously donated, thankful to them and for all they've done to give back to the city. Of course, our parade, wonderful. I attended a meeting with our new municipal judge to talk with her a bit more about municipal court, and I'm looking forward to working on addressing some current concerns that I have regarding municipal court. Attended a Blitmore High School staff reunion, which was very fun to spend some time with some people that were staff formerly at the high school, as I was in the past. And I'm happy to report that I have visited both Big Hill Park and Turtle Creek Greenway on several occasions the last few weeks, and it's been absolutely gorgeous. I am excited about the bike path dedication this Thursday at 4:30. If you're available, we'd love to have you come out there and join that with us. So it's a beautiful new bike path that runs through Big Hill Park, and what's very special about it is that it helps connect the Beloit and Janesville communities. Finally, we have a path through both communities that's connected. So thank you for that cooperation that helped make that possible, and look forward to seeing you there, hopefully Thursday at 4:30. Thank you.
Counselor Sladek.
I was able to attend the parade and the retirement for Steve Givhan. Appreciate his dedication and service to the city, and it was a nice retirement for him.
Counselor Duncan.
Dave, I got to write everything down.
That's good. You're organized. That's good.
Okay. I had the opportunity to attend the Serenity Garden groundbreaking program at Horace White Park that was given, that was given by the Family Service Association. Those who have been subjected to child abuse, sexual assault, and domestic violence will have a garden in Beloit where they can go to reflect as they heal. It was great to see our city manager and chief participate and show their support. Having worked at the Beloit Domestic Violence Center myself for a number of years, I know firsthand how important it is for victims to feel validated for showing strength and courage, and this garden is a tangible expression of the City of Beloit's recognition of that. Also, I had a chance to tour some of the areas of Beloit with Julie, our community development director. So I want to thank her for being so helpful and for sharing some of the history and knowledge about many of the upcoming projects. We're really fortunate to have you, Julie, on our team. I also went on a tour of the Beloit Fire Department and the Beloit Police Department with both chiefs. We have a lot of great staff who are working hard each day to provide the best services for our citizens. In order to recognize them, I was happy to learn that we have WOW, W-O-W, which is a group with the city that works on wellness for emotional, intellectual, intellectual, occupational, physical, social, and spiritual health and wellness. Just recently, our city staff had a health incentive and were delivered fruits and vegetables. And on May 20th, I had the honor of going to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Training Government 101 with Mark Prishel. We were provided with information about the rank, the framework for governing as new city officials. I was surprised to learn that we have only 10 city managers in the state of Wisconsin. And I also went to both events for Jim Caldwell, at the Boys and Girls Club and at Frooson School. It was great to see so many members from the public attend, especially because Jim is homegrown. He was born and raised in Beloit, attended schools here, and his mother, father, and family members, they still live here. Jim Caldwell is a wonderful role model who is giving back to his community. He donated a commute, a computer lab to Boys and Girls Club, and he and his wife have given to the Merrill Center as well. It's nice that Jim took the time to care and come back to Beloit, and hopefully others will do the same. I also attended Steve Givhan's retirement party. Terry Downing and the staff did a wonderful job helping to make his going-away celebration special. Steve has worked a lot of years with the city and has had great relationships with people at work, in the neighborhoods, and in our, and in our community. He will truly be missed. And I want to thank Chris LaMaster, Tina Gox, Alexis, and the other students at the Beloit Learning Academy for inviting me as the guest speaker and host, and for hosting the peace rally. The event was open to the public, and there were also students that were in, in attendance from Todd Elementary School. The violence in our community has got to stop, but it starts within each of us. We have got to be our neighbor's keeper, and when we think something bad may occur, we must not be silenced. Last but not least, I walked the Memorial Day Parade with President Lukey and other members of the city council. I brought along my two grandchildren, Arianna and Trey, and one of Arianna's best friends, Jayla, who helped to hold our city council banner. It was really hot outside, but we had fun honoring the military veterans, and I am looking forward to next year. Thank you.
And I'm glad you brought those youngsters along, because we would have died carrying that banner. Counselor Prishel.
Yes, along with everything they've already said, I won't be long, but I will be long. Anyway, um, yeah, we're going to, I, we, we, I, after the parade, I attended the Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony at East Lawn Cemetery, which is the real reason that we have Memorial Day, to decorate the cemeteries and remember the war dead. So that was always, that's always very good, and it's always quite a moving experience. It was well-attended this year, and it was a very, very beautiful day for the, for that. I also attended the West Side, the first West Side list, listening session with our police department, our chief, the crime analyst, chief of detectives, Lieutenant Mullin, and it was a two-hour-long session, a lot of, lot of really good information, a lot of good give and take, and that was over at the Boys and Girls Club. So I got to kill two birds with one stone, and I got to see the new computer lab, too, that night, so I didn't have to worry about missing the ceremony the next day. So that was very good. There are going to be two more listening sessions coming up here at the Merrill's Community Center.
June 17th.
June 17th, is it?
17th, July 17th.
And the one is, and there's one, 28th, yeah.
Capitol, Pentecostal, on Sunshine.
Yeah, on Sunshine Drive. So I won't be able to make the one, because I'm working, and I may make the other one. Also, as Sheila mentioned, we have the ribbon-cutting set for the new bike trail, bike and pedestrian trail at Big Hill Park. It's an amazing thing to see. It's in a part of the park that nobody's ever been in before. You'll get a chance to see things you didn't see before. It's a gorgeous little hike. I call it the switchback trail, because there's four switchbacks that take you down the hill and keep so great at 5% or less. So it's navigable by wheelchairs even. So it's, it's a really nice ADA compliant, gorgeous trail, and it connects to the peace trail coming south from Janesville. Hopefully someday we'll go south from Big Hill along Town to Shore Drive and meet up with Beloit, from there, meet up with South Beloit, and from there, go into Illinois. It would be great to see that happen. I don't know if I'll live to see it, but it's certainly something to look forward to. And that is Thursday, June 9th at 4:30 PM. And finally, on the new trash bins. I would just encourage everyone, and I've gotten a few contacts, try to remember that it's been a huge undertaking by staff to bring this together and make this happen. And it's going to take a while to shake everything out and get everything working. There are some smaller bins available for those that need them, and just be patient and wait till this rollout's done and see how things are going, but do contact staff, use the app, use the calendar, and make sure that you, you know, it's, it's going to be a great, great program, so just be patient as we roll it out. Thank you.
Vice President Levy.
Mark stole my thunder with the trash bin. I was so excited to say how happy I was to get a nice gift from the city when I pulled up in my driveway and saw two.
You're not going to trash them, are you?
I'm not going to trash them, no. They're too big to trash, so I want to thank the hard, everyone for their hard work of distributing those. Kind of like Mark said, anything new, you got to get used to, but down the road, you're going to see the benefits of it, so everyone just please be patient, give it a nice try. And they're huge, but thanks to the city for getting those out to everyone. Please, it started this week, so please make sure you read the flyer to make sure that you're utilizing them correctly, because we would hate for someone to start getting little orange stickers or finds right off the bat. So we want to make sure that everyone reads the information that was sent out, and make sure you understand. If not, give DPW a call, so, thank you.
One of the bittersweet things about going last is everything's been covered, but I do want to mention, oh, I'm sorry. You're so quiet.
Stealthy.
Counselor Hendricks, go ahead.
I'm fighting a migraine over here, so everyone has been, has said what, no, it's me, what's been on my list, so. But if, with the trash bins, there is an automation video at automatebeloit.com. I liked it, my daughter liked it, we watched it together, and she's like, I can do it. So, you know, that's helpful, as well as the information I was given with, with the carts, so just, there are resources if you have questions.
Thank you. And as, as Mark and you said, if people just give it time, I think we'll work the bugs out, and I think it's going to result in a lot cleaner city and a lot fewer injuries to our hard-working staff. And I, I think it's going to be a big improvement for Beloit, and we will be getting some more of the smaller ones for the, the older people and the people who need the smaller ones, but it'll take some time. I just want to add that it's nice to walk in the parade with the other, my other counselors, because we don't always agree with each other, but we are a team, and that really shows at events like the parade and stuff, because we, we, our, our main concern is the people and citizens of Beloit, and that's why each one of us is up here. And I, I wouldn't be here if, if I didn't have a team that felt the same way. The only thing I want to add is, this morning, it was nice being at the swearing-in of, and promotion, I should say, of four individual police officers to detective, and the promotion of one to sergeant. Very nice ceremony, had a lot of real positive comments achieved, so thank you again for the leadership. With that, we'll go on to the city manager's presentation.
The Beloit Public Library for the Summer Library Club Events.
We have Nick and Jen and.
Tina.
Tina.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nick, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, council member, city manager, as you know, the Beloit Public Library's three focal areas are literacy, jobs and careers, and quality focal areas are literacy, jobs and careers, and quality of life, and that's not in arbitrary order, that without a strong literacy base, it's very hard to get a good job, even harder to build a career, and certainly without economic security to be able to enjoy a high quality of life. And that's certainly true as far as what the city offers as well. If there's not a strong educational base here, if there's not jobs and careers here, it's hard for the city of Beloit itself to offer and advertise a high quality of life to those outside the city. So, all during the year, the library locks arms with many of its other educational partners, certainly K-12, nonprofits, for-profits, and offers each programs and services in each of these areas, but of course, one of the most important is that literacy base, is the education that the library provides. And at this time of year, as a matter of fact, this week, some of those partners slip away, and then it's up to the library to open its arms, scoop up those kids and others and teens, and bring them into the library for many of its services and programs and such, in order to prevent what we all know is called the summer slide. So, the library is there. We have expanded our programming over the last years, and in fact, we've seen a 15% increase in program attendance, and that's very, very impressive. And the reasons why that is and what we're offering, I'm going to step aside, and I'm going to go ahead and let Jenny, Jenny Schamber, who is our youth services director, and Tina Kokuski, who is our teen and adult services director, go ahead and describe what's going to be happening over the summer. And I hope I see you all next week at our library board meeting. You received that invitation, and we'll be talking about not only these things, but also looking at a lot of the evolution of the public library in terms of the electronic resources, the digital resources, all the kinds of things that everybody wants to tap into and grab onto. We'll be demonstrating what we have to offer and what we see going forward in that regard next week at our board meeting, so I hope you'll join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you, counselors, for inviting us this evening. So do I just, for the presentation, okay. Okay. Regina, I want to let you know that we have our very own Summer of WOW going on this summer with our reading program. It's called On Your Mark, Get Set, Go, and so all of our programs for kids 12 and younger, and even our teens and adults, are going to focus on fitness and health and well-being and sports, and so our own little Summer of WOW, so that was a great segue. Thank you. So, our Summer Library Club program actually starts this Saturday, June 11th, and will run through August 13th. Oh. So, the most important thing that we have for our Summer Library Club program is actually our reading program. Like Nick mentioned, we do have the summer slide, and we want to make sure that kids are reading all summer long. If they're reading all summer long, when they get back into school in the fall, they should be able to just pick right up where they left off, hopefully. So, we encourage kids to read for fun and prizes. As long as they read at least 20 minutes a day throughout the entire summer, for our three different reading periods, we'll give them a small little prize for each reading period that they finish, and at the end, when they read for the entire summer, again for those nine weeks, they will receive their very own book. In the past, we did kind of little trinket prizes for the end prize, and we thought, you know what, we've got the books, let's go ahead and make sure that at least kids get a book in their hands for finishing the program over the summer. Starting this Saturday, we do have a kickoff event. It's going to be from 1:00 to 3:00 in our public meeting room, and at that time, kids will be able to sign up for that reading program. We're going to have some games and activities available for kids and their families, and as Tina will mention, also some ways to sign up for the teens and adults, and we're also going to have Culvers Frozen Custard there, and hopefully Scoopy will be there as well. Throughout the summer, then, we do have different library programs that we offer. Some of our regular programs are our Tuesday Tales and Treats, our Wednesday Preschool Discovery Storytimes, our Wednesday Tween Times, our poolside stories that we do at Kruger Park on Wednesdays at 3:00, and our baby playdates that we have every other Thursday at 10:00 AM. Something new this year that we're doing is called Play and Read Express, and that's a play off of our Play and Read playgroups that we had during the school year. The same AmeriCorps members that presented those playgroups are going to continue with the Play and Read Express on Mondays. It'll be kind of a condensed version of those playgroups that we had during the school year. We also have some family fun days. We want to make sure that the kids are having fun throughout the summer, so we bring them in with some fun performers and entertainers and make sure that they check out books when they leave. So, we have Smarty Pants coming this summer. He's been at the library before, and he does balloon shapes, giant legendary balloons. He does some magic and some comedy, so that's, he was one of our better-attended programs a couple of years ago, so we're happy to have him back. I'm really excited to have a community program, a group from the community coming in. The Beloit Bombshells Roller Derby Team is going to be at the library in July. We're going to be turning our back staff parking lot into kind of a demo area, so let's hope that it doesn't rain, and so it's just going to be a great way for kids to learn about roller derby, to see a live demo, and really kind of see empowerment of women in sports, and I'm just, I saw them at an event earlier in the year. I'm just really excited to have them at the library this summer. We also have Laura Doherty coming in July. She is a musician, and again, she's going to do some interactive songs and dancing, focusing on that being active and healthy eating and keeping fit. I should mention that a couple of the family fun day programs, the Laura Doherty and the Smarty Pants, are sponsored by our Fable Group, our friends at Beloit Library. The funding for those performers comes through that group. We are also partnering this summer with the Beloit School District and the Salvation Army to provide free meals for kids at the library. We only do it for one week in August, but it's an important week because it's the week after most of the other programs throughout the community stop doing their free meals, so we kind of pick up for that week in August. It's kind of the week right before kids get ready to go back to school, so it's going to be from noon until 1:00, and again, our AmeriCorps members are going to be doing activities during those programs as well. And so, On Your Mark, Get Set, Read at your Beloit Public Library this summer, and with that, I will turn it over to Tina, and she'll be talking about the teen and adult events.
Good evening. Having fun at the library in the summer is not just for kids, so we also offer teen and adult Summer Library Clubs, which meet during the same time as the kids' club. Teens and adults will participate in several of the same activities this summer, but they'll have differing themes, and the teen Summer Library Club theme is Get in the Game, Read. We have kids sign up for all ages, starting June 11th, as Jenny mentioned, is the kickoff, 1:00 to 3:00 PM, or you can sign up anytime at our reference desk. So, reading, playing, and the reigning bingo game and earning prizes is the healthy mind part for teens in this, because we're talking about healthy minds and bodies this summer, and participating in the Every Step Counts program is to track mileage through activity with a goal of 50 miles is the healthy body part. We're partnering with the Friends of the Riverfront Activities and using walking opportunities outlined in the City of Beloit Parks and Leisure Services brochure to help promote mind and body health this summer. Programming that supports these goals includes the BPL Walks Walking Group, which will meet on Tuesday and Thursday mornings at 7:30 AM at the library, and the Teen Writers Workshop returns this summer on the third Wednesday of each month to help promote literacy skills through creative writing and sharing with others. We're also continuing with our Popular Gaming Club, which includes cards, board, and video games. Gaming draws teens to the library, creates a connection between young adults and the library staff, and helps teens develop teamwork and organizational skills. The Midday Movie, which happens on the third Tuesday of each month, is a new entertainment addition for both adults and teens with a mix of older and more recent films, and the Teen Book Discussion Group, Paperbacked, will continue to meet on the third Monday of each month during the summer. We provide a free book to teens, and then they come together to talk about the book while enjoying pizza and soda. There'll also be three maker programs for teens this summer, and creativity is emphasized. Food as art promotes healthy food used in creative ways. Kelly Washburn from the Beloit Historical Society will facilitate a craft session using mosaics, and the International Duct Tape Program is a nod to the Olympics as we create flags of countries with duct tape. The Open Mic Prose and Poetry Program will give teens an opportunity to read what they have written through the Teen Writers Workshop or on their own. And the Beloit Public Library will host the Rock County Teen Battle of the Books Event this summer on July 23rd. Teens from around the whole county, ages 11 through 14, will work in teams to answer questions about six books. Literacy and fun is wrapped up into one event, and we hope teens will get in the library game this summer at the Beloit Public Library. The Adult Summer Library Club theme this year is Exercise Your Mind, Read. Sign-up starts at the kickoff again on the 11th this Saturday, and once again, the two goals are to promote a healthy mind through reading and a healthy body through activity, so adults will do this through logging their reading, entering prize giveaways, and participating in the Every Step Counts program to track mileage through activity with the goal of 50 miles by the end of the summer. The Adult Summer Library Club starts with a blood drive at the library on June 13th. Join us by signing up to give blood, and you can do this online. The BPL Walks Group starts Tuesday, June 14th. Both adults and teens are encouraged to participate. We will start slow and build up our walking endurance throughout the summer, and beverages and fruit are provided after the walk. The Open Mic Poetry and Prose Event, which I mentioned earlier, is also for adults, since the driving force behind this event is our adult writing group, the State Line Night Riders. The Open Mic Event will happen on August 10th. Part of a healthy mind involves entertainment, and our Popular Fable Film Night will continue throughout the summer on the first Wednesday of each month. We'll be showing three current films for adults, and popcorn, fruit, and beverages are provided, and we've listened to requests from the public, and a suggestion for those who prefer movie entertainment in the daytime led to the creation of the Midday Movies Event. We'll start with the Retro Movie Jaws to prepare everyone for Shark Week later in June. Established and popular library programming continues this summer with Training for Early Adopt a Shelf Program, the State Line Genealogy Club, which meets on the second Friday of each month, the Fourth Wednesday and BPL Grinnell Bookies Book Discussion Groups, and the Focus on You Series. Focus on You will highlight financial wellness brought to you by the Consumer Credit Counseling, and heart-healthy eating will be presented by dieticians from the Beloit Health System. The State Line Night Riders is a group of local writers who meet weekly for writing exercises, readings, and writing critiques, and any adult who writes or wants to write is welcome to join this group, which meets every Wednesday evening. Booked for Dessert happens on the second Wednesday of each month at the Grinnell Hall Senior Center, where attendees are treated to a marathon book talk of 30 to 40 books. Eat dessert and check out books to take home with them. And Unfinished Objects is a program for craft-minded folks who want to work on their unfinished craft projects in the company of others. This is commonly called the UFO Group. And Tablet One-on-One, which happens every Friday during Summer Library Club, is for anyone who has a tech device question. Library staff is available to answer your tablet, phone, and laptop questions one-on-one, first come, first served. And finally, to wrap up the summer, we'll be celebrating the 50th anniversary of the release of the Beatles album Revolver by picnicking to the sounds of the Madison Group's Get Back Wisconsin on August 27th. This group will perform Beatles music by recreating the original musical arrangements and using the same type of instruments that were used by the Beatles 50 years ago. As the group says, their performance is musical, scholarly, fun, and it's free for all ages at the library. Our thanks go out to the city of Beloit and Fable Friends at Beloit Library for their generous sponsorship of the Summer Library Clubs. More information about summer at the library is available at www.bloitlibrary.org, and we encourage everyone to visit the Beloit Public Library this summer because there's something for everyone when you get in the game, exercise your mind, and get on your mark, get set, read. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to know Tina and Jen and Nick that we have a living, vibrant, creative library in Beloit. It makes us all look good and better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I hope what comes through loud and clear in there is the partnerships, and that's something that Tina and Jenny have really concentrated on. Libraries have always reached out and had community partners, et cetera, but they have really gone out of their way to make that happen, whether that's funding partners, or whether that is true partners, where they're both putting on the program, or whether it's simply opening our spaces to others in the community to come in and do the kind of program that they can. It doesn't always have to be us, it can be other people, other groups and organizations coming in and offering what they have as well, so thank you.
Just one question. Kevin and Mark wonder if they can come for Culvers next week?
Absolutely.
It's not an adult program.
One of them has to dress as Scoopy, though, I think. I'm not sure, but.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Reports from boards and city officers.
The resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for a T-grant for the reconstruction of Colley Road east of Gateway Boulevard.
Mr. Boyes.
In December of 2014, the city entered a development agreement with Pratt Industries, which will result in 140 new jobs in the new Pratt facility. The city agreed to accomplish specified roadway improvements adjacent to the Pratt site, the Pratt Development Site. In addition to TIF funding, T-grant funding was also agreed to be pursued. We're very happy that the city T-grant application has been approved, and now city council approval of the related transportation economic assistance, or T-grant, agreement is necessary to allow the, allow the city access to the $700,000 of T-grant funding to implement reconstruction of Colley Road east of Gateway Boulevard to complete our roadway improvements commitments. The total estimated design and construction cost for the projects are, for the project is $1,556,350. Funding for the city's matching funds is available through the 2016 capital improvement budget. Staff recommends council adoption of the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the state municipal T-grant agreement.
Mr. Boyes, the government gives $700,000 towards this, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Are there counselor questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Duncan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Bless you. Is there a motion for number 12?
Move.
Moved by, seconded by Mark Pruschel. Motion's made, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.